Call a meeting to order, is there any additions or deletions? Anybody got anything? Okay, I'd ask for a motion with regard to the regular minutes of August 24th.
Haven't looked them over. Approve them, make a motion to approve them as presented.
Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
I thought they looked pretty good myself.
Yep. If there is no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Road Commissioner, do you have any report?
Just an update, an extensive work on Quarterline Road. We, the major part of it should be finished by tomorrow, Tuesday. But then there'll be a couple more driveway culverts we need to install and then start capping the road. It is rough up there, so I want everybody to use caution for at least another week. Going up through there, the road will be closed for the rest of this week, right into probably the first two days of next week.
That's when you're working up there, or is it just closed?
We only, we close it when we're working there from six to three every day, five days a week.
I did go up and look at you guys, they're doing a hell of a job. Quite a difference.
Working with Heidi and we're trying to figure out our budget status on it, where we are financially and what our spending.
Grants that are being utilized for that project.
Yeah, there's two grants on that project, one's a $20,000 grant, Better Roads Grant, and the second is a $15,000 matching grant too, also.
Maybe we can get some.
We're definitely gonna, yeah.
Important for the taxpayer to know that that project has that kind of grant backing to it.
Right.
That's good. When you said that you were working with Heidi, I thought maybe you handed her a shovel or something.
I was gonna try.
My hard hat comes in next week.
Okay.
The other thing is, Katie and I met with Devin Minery from Planning Commission last week on the scope of possibly going for another grant for next year on the backside of Tier Road. Where, I talked to Devin Thursday and last week here, and he was crunching numbers, see where we're at with that, to apply for that grant also for next year, so we can get up for, apply for grants for next year's projects already. And as a side note, we're looking at the towns portion with no grants this year, a paving, they're actually gonna start paving by Thursday of this week, South and Middle Road, Mountain Avenue, and now Freesher Road. So we'll be, hopefully start by Thursday and they should finish up by next Tuesday of that paving.
Wow. So miles wise, how much?
Uh, let's see, I think there's about three miles, two and a half to three miles.
That's gonna be some.
I don't have that exact figure in front of me.
Yeah, that's gonna be good. Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have for it though. Any other questions or?
Questions from the public? Yes.
We still have a pothole up there by the rail tracks.
We have a pothole by the rail tracks and that, that section when we do South Middle Road, we are actually gonna do that apron on Walker Mountain to the rail tracks, and that'll take care of that bad section.
Cash, what are you hearing on that truck? Do you have any idea on when?
Oh.
They give a date?
Um, the little truck, Katie and I went to New Hampshire, two weeks ago, and looked it over, did paperwork on that, they are taking it to biking directly from the dealership for us, that's the 550. Um, the Mack truck will be built approximately the 22nd of this month, which is next week, and they're hoping for delivery of it September 30th. And we're scheduled for biking for the big truck to get outfitted towards, about on the 20th of November, so I'm looking to see it just before Christmas.
Is that, are they gonna be red with our signage on it?
It's gonna be green.
Green? Marine Corps green.
We changed color to green, um, I guess one of the other trucks was supposed to be green, uh, I guess, I think it was the Mack.
Yeah.
Ended up, there was a mix-up and it ended up being red. And we talked about it, and I talked with the crew about it, and my biggest thing about changing it from red to green, that, that will, a lot of times I see the truck coming down the road and stuff, and that way it'll identify which driver it is and which truck it is, and it, you know, to offset. That's the reason why we did that, the 550 is red.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for the Road Commissioner? Okay, hearing them, uh, select board warrants, we've all signed them, I think, now Cash, you haven't.
I have all signed.
Alright, so we'll get this right over to you. And the public's welcome, take a look at it. Do we have any guests?
We have a guest. She's hiding.
Yeah. Any, any public comments?
Public comments, yeah. Well, I think Cash wanted to get into a discussion about the cemetery and the saplings that are growing up. We talked about it, but the last meeting, I didn't think of it and I don't think he did either.
Bob missed it.
Something about saplings in the cemeteries?
The Chippin Hook Cemetery and the Little Parrot, they ought to be attended to before they get too big.
Yeah, no, that's what we wanted to discuss.
So can we have, see if Johnson's is interested in doing some hourly work in there? To get things in shape?
That's my opinion, to, actually that I'd be taking right back, before it grows up, once it grows up, they're gonna.
Be bigger problems.
Be bigger problems and they'll be blamed on what later.
It's encroaching on that property too, because that's why you could see them growing there before they mowed it the last time. So they're just gonna spread.
So I'll make a motion that we authorize Johnson, um, our mowing company, to do some extra work in the cemeteries, trimming back to the edges and getting saplings taken care of. Um, it's, Katie, in that contract, when you were working that up, didn't it have an hourly?
Yeah.
Okay, so per our hourly agreement in the contract, um, not to exceed, what do you want to say, 25 hours to start? Forty hours?
That's about $1,000, so that oughta take care of it.
So not to exceed 25 hours.
Are you willing to meet with them up there to explain to them what you're looking for them to do?
I.
I think someone's gonna need to do that.
I think Cemetery Commissioners should.
Cemetery Commissioners, are you guys?
Cemetery Committee.
Committee, I'm sorry.
You used the wrong terminology.
I'm sorry, I messed up again.
Committee.
Committee, but I'd be willing to.
I'm unable to do that at this time because it's tax time, so I need to be here, so.
I'm willing to find some time, somewhere, somehow, to do that, to meet with them.
While we're discussing cemetery, we also need to find out where do we stand with getting that dirt and rocks taken care of that were thrown over the bank.
The, the, at this point, the person who did the work is denying that it was them. They're saying.
What?
They are denying that it was them.
Oh.
So we don't really have a leg to stand on, so unless the town's gonna pay for those, that to be cleaned up as well in the process of all this, it's kind of, is what it is.
Well, we've got graves there, so you should do something.
So, we had, in the backside where we had, um, some horticultural interest a few years ago.
Yeah.
Um, there was, uh, some old footings, which we believe was old gravestone bases, dumped over the bank, but the problem is, the bank that they dumped them over, based on the maps that we have, is the pauper portion of the cemetery, which means it's on graves. Which means it really should be cleaned up.
So it's up to us as a town to?
It's probably up to us to do it, I brought it up to the individual who had been doing some work there, now maybe another select board member would like to make a phone call and see if they can get to it, or maybe wanna stop in, I can, I can get you the name, it's one of the, one of the monument companies in West Rutland is who did the work. Um, and I stressed to that individual that we believed that it was part of that work, and that it needed to be cleaned up, and I, based on my interpretation of what was said to me is, they are denying it was them, they are denying that it was during their work, so.
And you passed that information on to Katie, and we'll try and set up a, a meeting, maybe if Bob's available and myself, or Cash and myself, uh, with this individual.
Now I gotta dig back through, you passed me that individual's na, somebody passed me that individual's name, do you still have it in your email or something?
Savory, isn't it?
It was Philip Savory.
Yeah.
Who was the individual who was contracting out to have his family's stones worked on.
Yeah.
But I don't remember the company name he was using, so you would have to get in touch with him again, and that was so long ago, I'm not sure I have his contact information.
What is the name, I think it's the one right on Clarendon Avenue, in West Rutland.
That's Boer, Bo.
Boer, isn't it?
Boer.
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 I'm pretty sure that's, I'm pretty, Baucher, I'm pretty sure that's who was doing the work.
Can we do a little investigation?
The dirt could be leveled off easy enough, but you've got those big giant rocks and stones in there that have gotta go.
I mean, and what we're talking about, that area, just to be clear, is unmarked graves.
Mm-hmm.
On the map, it's unmarked graves, it's not like, the, it doesn't look like the rest of the cemetery, and quite frankly, the, the forest has kind of encroached on that portion, but on the map, it states that at least, there's at least one or two rows, and all it says is that it's the Pauper Cemetery.
Well, those are the same, there's other stones there though, there's other families there, because if you remember, there's some stones there before you get to the Paupers part.
Correct, there's, there's stones in front of it, and then behind that is where the Pauper portion is.
They were complaining that people were backing over the stones and knocking them over.
Correct, correct.
Cause they talked about putting big stones, and we said, well, you've got big stone that you threw over the bank, why didn't you use those?
Do we get equipment in there to remove them or anything, or?
Yes, I think you can get in to smooth out and pick up what was dumped.
Wish I know, we just pulled the esprit out of there.
Oh, that would've been perfect, to slide it right out.
Well, let's, we have a motion, you had a motion proposed, it was not seconded, to my knowledge, um, let's deal with that and then follow up on this conversation in a minute, so, remember what your motion was?
Yeah, so my motion was to authorize Johnson's to do up to 25 hours worth of work on trimming and cleaning up the cemetery.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any wanna oppose? Okay, on this next thing that you brought up, Katie, can we try and get ahold of, what was it, Boer?
Alvin Baucher.
I think so, I'm, I would just, I mean, obviously, a cordial call, and just say, we believe you did some work in the cemetery, and just feel them out, I think we need to just find out, um, if that material that got dumped over the bank is from them or not.
Mm-hmm.
If it's not, it's gonna just, we're gonna have to just deal with it. You're not talking a lot, you're talking, it would all, probably not even, I wouldn't even say, it's probably not even half a one-ton load.
Do you want their phone number?
At this point Katie's gonna handle that.
I'll email it to you. Alright.
Alright, so we'll follow up, follow up with you, and then we'll see what other select board members available, and we'll have a visit, even if they don't come, or at least we'll go up and look at it with the Road Commissioner. Alright, uh. Old business, um, have you guys ordered the new speed signs for?
We have, yeah, we're gonna work with Katie on it, and I got them in contact with V-Trans and Mendon, I just got the number, week and a half ago, for contact up there, for the post.
I also noticed on the north end of Middle Road, the, just through the four-way intersection, there's the sign that says, um, load legal as other state highways or whatever.
Yeah.
The words, it's, I mean, there, you can't read that sign anymore.
That's one on Mountain Avenue?
No, it's on, right on Middle Road, headed this way. So you come through Danny's Four Corners.
Oh, and the, yeah.
It's right on the right-hand side, just, just past there.
Perhaps, in that area.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just noted, I don't know if you, I don't know if there's another one around, or if we should order one, cause.
We need to order some of them, we don't have any.
There was something about, if a sign's not legible.
Yeah.
We're liable or whatever if it's not followed, or something like that, so we need to make sure that it's.
With that being said, we need to do a follow-up with the truck through signs.
Yes.
With Katie, so that hasn't been done yet either.
Sounds like we'll have a good sign order.
Mm-hmm, it's gonna be huge.
Well, let's, that no-through truck sign on Mountain Ave, it's getting pretty rough shape.
Mm-hmm.
Let's, uh.
And the limit sign too, that Robert's talking about.
Right, let's try, let's get on that, Katie, alright, so we'll, um, you can, you can push us to be a little bit more proactive with it. Um, I think, there was another sign, oh, the, up on Tier Road, the 25 mile an hour?
Yeah, I don't have one.
Okay.
And then we needed, there's one going, uh, from Walker Mountain towards Ira.
Yeah.
There's one right there by the apple tree.
What he was talking about.
Coming the other way, right?
Yeah, and so, um.
And it's also says, reduce speed ahead on the same post, with 25 mile an hour, on that same post.
Hmm.
I don't know why they doubled up like that.
Tier Road open now?
Tier Road? Uh, Ira's been doing extensive work over there, and I'm not sure if they're completed yet or not, they've been in conversation with me about it, cause they had to put signs up on Walker Mountain roadside, to close the road at that location.
And there was a sign about this side.
Alright, can we invite the, the officer in?
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, we've asked you to come up and give a little bit of a presentation as to, you know, what the hours are that you guys are patrolling and stuff like that, so you have some information, it'll be on PEG TV.
Okay, do you want me to step in front here, or?
If you don't mind.
Okay, yeah, sure. Just, where do you want me to, uh, over here?
Sure, that's fine, yeah, sure.
Yeah, right here and everything.
Um, yeah, so, this is all in response, of course, to that community letter that was sent out to all the select boards and certainly our region here for Rutland. Um, you know, one of my troopers has stopped in and talked to the folks, um, so in that letter, obviously it talked about how we're kinda reimagining the state police and how we're gonna be, uh, doing our patrol procedures a little bit differently going forward. Um, and in that, we're gonna be using more of a community policing model. Um, that model is gonna entail, uh, going from an approach where we're strictly enforcement all the time, pulling people over and tickets and making arrests and things of that nature, to embedding in all the communities, uh, a little bit more to get to know folks and understand, you know, are we handling all the concerns and the needs of all the communities we serve? Obviously, we haven't been doing, you know, 100% great job of that, I get it, you know, I, I worked on the road as well, I work in an office now, but, um, you know, it's something we need to do to, to, to make sure we're still tied into the community very well. And we understand that, you know, a lot of our troopers are involved in their own communities where they live, but they may not know the folks in the different communities that we're constantly patrolling. Um, so this effort is gonna be, it's gonna be a bit different, but, and it's gonna take time, um, but obviously, we're looking forward to, to having our troopers get to know the people we're serving a little bit better, so that they can feel comfortable enough to talk to us, and, and we can feel comfortable enough to go to talk to them, and we're kinda creating friendships and relationships, uh, it's gonna help us solve our issues of property crimes, um, drug problems certainly that, that exist throughout the county, um, so all these things are, are gonna help us, uh, help the communities basically.
I see that there are two, uh, that I know of, two troopers that live in this community, right?
Yeah, uh, yes, yeah.
Okay, one of them on, well, just down across from the high school, and then one lives off of Schussberg Road.
I don't like giving, uh, you guys' addresses out all the time, just, and I know you guys aren't gonna go harass them, but, um, yeah, we do, we do have obviously some troopers that do live in the area, so.
Good, that's good. Uh, I, I think from select board's standpoint of view is, uh, you know, of course, we, uh, have the, we don't have an active constable like we used to have, and second constable, and we use the Sheriff's Department, but we also, uh, you know, would like information, contact information, um, so that we have a better go-between between the state troopers as well as the community too, so.
When you say contact information, are you talking, um, just beyond the, the standard barracks number and, and with particular troopers, or?
For the interest of the public.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the, the barracks number would be our first standoff, if any of the troopers wanna give their more personal contact information, I would suggest to, uh, you know, give that to Gloria, who's our, uh, she's our town clerk.
Okay.
Or Katie.
I got, um, Schussberg Parkers, Parkers here.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Because we're on TV, I just wanted to make sure that people understand that you guys are making a concerted effort to get down here, so.
Without a doubt, in fact, you know, with our, our new processes, I assigned two day-shift troopers to essentially spend a lot more time in town here, and three night-shift troopers. Um, and I can certainly pass along their information, um, they all have state-issued phones now, so that you can call them direct through a cellphone, um, things of that nature, so they can pass that on to, to, you know, the folks that need that, wanna have an inside kinda line to them. Um, I would caution against using them too, too much, just because they're not always working, they are on days off, and I don't wanna get people in a, in a situation where they think, well, the state police just isn't working today, we're always working.
Yeah.
It's just the, the troops that are assigned to this particular town, Town of Clarendon, um, you know, they, they will be here some days, not all the days.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, I think that as long as we have, you know, our contact people, which is, for select board, is, uh, our admin clerk, and of course the town clerk, so if they at least have those numbers, that would help, I think.
Definitely, and I will pass that along to them.
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
Um, and that, and those numbers are for ongoing issues, not anything, obviously, an emergency situation, this is something that, A, they're so-and-so and they've been speeding down my road for quite a while, can we get some extra business going on out here, maybe to slow them down, things of that nature. Um, so stuff like that is perfect for those troopers to, to be contacted for.
The last question I have.
Yes.
Is, when are you gonna build the barracks up here in town?
Not soon enough.
Uh, yeah, I, I am not the one making that, uh, that business decision, um, so I, my understanding is, and the latest information I've been given, it's, it's gonna be quite some time, time away. Um, with the state, obviously, and the budget situation, which you, you guys are all well aware of, um, you know, there's, there's no, there's not gonna get, anything that's gonna get off the ground, uh, you know, in the next year or two, so, it's gonna be years.
Hmm.
If it does happen, and there are other things at play too, that kinda go into that, and you run into a lot of other situations at the very top level, certainly us and how the state government, uh, funds these things, so.
Any board members?
Yes, sir.
I listened to you, quite a number of years ago, well, we had Officer Lieutenant Patch here.
Yep.
And he ran a, kind of a committee-type thing, where he would have the contact paper from the towns in, once every couple of months, you know, just for a, I guess to put it lightly, it's just a bull session, but you know, of what is going on in the communities and so on.
Yep.
Do you foresee doing something like this?
Good question, yes, um, so in fact, I'm putting together an advisory committee, um, I'm gonna be having representatives from different towns, um, you know, we're not gonna be able to do all the towns, but, you know, two or three towns that are kinda clustered around each other, they can have one rep basically represent all three towns. If you put, you know, 30 people all in one room for me with a, with a community advisory panel, it's gonna get a bit crowded, you know. So, but yeah, no, that's definitely in the works, um, so if you have anybody in mind who you think would wanna be a, a part of my community advisory panel, let me know. Um, you know, anybody who's wanting to volunteer, I'm guessing right now it's gonna be a quarterly meeting, it may turn into a monthly meeting, it depends on actually how the folks running the panel really wanna do it, so.
Right, right, uh, yeah, at this point, I would, even though I still carry down the roster, we're not doing that, but I would continue.
I was gonna say, you were the, you were the person listed, right?
Right.
Okay.
If it stacks up, I'm more than willing to.
Yeah, I'd be happy to have you, Robert, so, um, definitely contact you once we get that going, um, you know, and I'll, I'll certainly give you more information then as to how we're gonna do it, where we're gonna do it, things of that nature, so.
Yeah.
I would guess by year's end, we're gonna have this thing probably up and going, so hopefully.
Good.
By the end of December.
Cool.
Good, that's good, and, uh.
Yes, sir.
So I have a little confusion here, is this something that, just getting off, getting going with, because recently in the past, we've called the state place and stuff, and it seemed to be passing on to, well, you need to call the Sheriff's Department and stuff like that, what, I, are you basically trying to come on board for the town, for the people, the residents, or?
Yeah, I mean, so, that's exactly what we wanna cure, situations like that are uncalled for, the way we look at it, right, the way I look at it, running the Rutland barracks. Um, it's certainly, um, you know, that, that's just not good community service, you know, we're not providing what we need to, to the folks that are essentially paying the bills, which are you and everybody else, all the community members. Um, so that's just, it's just wrong, um, you know, and that's where we wanna grow in this relationship, we want people to feel that, uh, their needs are being met, and that they're, we're at least giving them answers as to what they can do, as opposed to just passing the buck to say the Sheriff's Department, or, uh, passing it on to anybody else, you know, and vice versa, any other police agency. We wanna avoid that going forward, we wanna create a situation where people feel comfortable enough to come and tell us what their issues are, and that we can help solve them, and if we can't, that we're gonna point them in the right direction to get them the answers, so.
I think that, for me personally, if you could make an effort to do just what you're doing tonight here, to other towns, that, you know, like Wallingford and stuff.
Yep.
That would really work, I think you would get.
Yeah.
A good solid backing.
Yep, and it's, you know, and that's, it's been a long overdue.
Yeah.
Um, I think we've been in our own bubble for a long time, like you said, and, uh, you know, it's time that we do get a little bit more immersed in the communities, um, and part of that is me, you know, Mike Dye on the station commander, coming out and talking to folks and getting that, um, that general, you know, first introduction going to get us back connected. And then it's, you know, beyond that, it's under the troopers under my command, and make sure we're fulfilling these relationships, we're following up on them, we're making sure everybody's getting their answers, so.
That's good, and I like the hat.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
I don't have to go over the history.
Because I will say this, back, uh, when they were running this program before, when I was going through it, it was very informative, really.
Yeah.
There was a lot of information, I'm not gonna say loose information, but there was information put out that, uh, you know, was helpful to the communities.
Yeah. It's, you're right, um, it's true, we've gotten away from that serve model, um, you know, where we're really involved in the communities, um, and quite honestly, I think we fall away from that a lot of times, most of the state troopers now are comprised of, of, of guys and girls that are not from the area, you guys are all well aware of that.
Right.
Um, so they come in, they work, uh, they do a good job, but at the same time, they don't, they didn't grow up in these communities, so they don't know the people, and it's, you know, it, there's always kinda the, um, you know, if they're not very comfortable with people, they're not gonna come out and kinda do these things, they're not gonna show up at the select board meetings and meet with folks, they're not gonna show up at, you name the town event, right, they're not gonna be there. They're just gonna be stopping cars for speeding and arresting people for drunk driving and for, um, various assaults and other things. Um, so it, it, it's a bit of a challenge, but I think, um, we've avoided that challenge for at least a little while now, it's time to kinda get back into it.
Back into the community. Back into the community.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
And you, you're gonna be the commander?
I'm the station commander, sir. Um, so obviously, I'm responsible for all of my folks that, that work out of Barracks. Um, that's twenty-four troopers right now. Um, and, you know, if there's any issues with them and how they're servicing the people in your communities, just let me know, you know, call down to Rell and Barracks, you know, certainly make that complaint to me, um, so that I'm aware of it. And also, if they're doing an awesome job, I wanna hear about it too.
Yeah.
Um, you know, there's nothing better than positive affirmation, especially for the, uh, the troopers now that are in their twenties. They're a little bit different than me. I'm an, I'm an older dog, so to speak. Um, they, they kinda respond differently. They respond better to, to positive things as opposed to, uh, negative and, you know, you need to do that better, so. I'd love to hear that, if they're doing a good job and, you know, you wanted to, to make that known to me, that'd be great, so.
Yeah, and I'll admit, my eyes aren't the best. I can't read your name back.
Yeah, that's Dyon, D-I-O-N.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much for coming down. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Good job, I appreciate it.
And obviously, you know, going forward, anytime you wanna have me back or anything for any kinda conversations, whether it be a select board meeting or outside of that, you know, just call the Barracks, uh, let me know, so. I'm available. Uh, I may be pulled to another town. We only have about thirty, you know, that I've gotta cover, but, uh, I consider to make time for you when I can get the time, so.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Alright, we'll consider that our new business. Uh, Katie, do you have anything to report?
Um, I have printed out a sheriff's report for you guys. You had requested that at the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
That's from June first on, so if you want anything past that, I can get it for you. It's just a lot of information to print, so.
Appreciate that. Anything else?
That's it.
Have anything for us, Young Lee?
Um, tax bills did go out, uh, September second and the taxes will be due Saturday, October seventeenth. And I will be here that day, um, on the back of the tax bill. It actually gives the two weeks, um, prior to taxes being due, uh, my hours. I am typically here Monday through Thursday, ten to four, um, anyways. Um, I just won't be here September twenty-second, but other than that, I'm here. Um, if, if anyone wants to stop in and see me as opposed to mailing in their payments this year, so.
That's good, that's on TV.
Just, uh, one quick question, and I know billed and been out a very short period of time. Have you seen any return at all yet to speak of?
Yeah, um, today, actually, when I came in, um, the, my mail was this tall. I took in two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of payments today.
Oh, okay.
It was, it was busy day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Stop in myself. Bob, do you have any, or Cash, do you have any concerns?
I'm all set, thanks.
Bob?
I'm all set tonight, thank you.
Me too, you?
Updates as far as where we stand. Last meeting, we talked about uni first.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so I called a couple of times, I emailed, um, and then I finally got ahold of, uh, Robert Murray, that's I think our district guy. Um, I told him that the board ordered to stop payment unless we can get the contracts straightened out. Um, so he did bill our September month, um, with the eighty-seven that we were getting originally charged. Um, so he said he's trying to adjust the price, um, but our contract didn't have any price protection. So, um, we've just been going back and forth. Um, I asked for a copy of our contract so I can review it. Haven't gotten that yet, um. But I guess we'll see going forward if he continues to bill us at eighty-seven.
Well, as soon as we can figure that out, otherwise we'll say enough is enough.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep. Motion to adjourn?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, before he does, uh, one quick little thing I forgot. Sorry, Robert, uh, last, two weeks ago, I missed the Solid Waste meeting. I gotta admit, my fault. I totally forgot about it. Uh, they're supposed to send me down the information from it and so on. I've not received it yet, but, uh, just in case someone asks.
Are they, seeing as you brought that up, are they, uh, trying to do any changes to that, uh, zoo that they got over there?
Uh.
Recycling, not recycling, uh?
Food, with, last I knew, no, uh, but you know, I wonder for us, now that you bring that up, talking to the boys over there, if we could maybe move that thing over somewhere near where the cardboard is or something. There's not as many people go over there because that thing can be rather ripe on certain days.
Tell you what, I'm gonna wait till it's twenty below zero and it throws in the bottom of the thing and they can't get it empty.
Oh, then they have to container and all. Yeah, but other, otherwise, no, other than the state, they're pushing it and they want it done, uh.
Yep.
But I, I will say this, I believe there's feelings amongst the people at Solid Waste District that it's never gonna work.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Yep.
Unbelievable. Sounds like Vietnam battlefield.
Yeah.
Where it didn't eat.
No, no, let's not go there. Okay, now let's go with Robert's motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Did you second?
Both.
Well, they got seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?